I'd like to call to order the Charter Township of Oxford Planning Commission Regular Meeting, Thursday, August 25th, 2016. Would you please rise and pay your respects to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Secretary, please note the roll.
Noted.
Thank you. Excused is Mr. Humwick and Mr. Berger. Approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Been moved by Mr. Spiz, supported by Mr. Young. That was the way I heard it. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Approval of the minutes.
I'll make the motion to approve the regular Planning Commission meeting of August 11th, 2016.
Support. Moved by Mr. Curtis, supported by Mr. Spiz. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Public comments on items not scheduled for public hearing are on this agenda. Anybody in the public wishing to speak, please step up to the lecture. State your name and address for the record.
Well, we're touching 3385 Delano Road. I'm here to let you know, the planning board, that many of my neighbors object to the House of Providence's plan to build institutional dormitory with about 200 special needs children on their newly purchased 118 acres on Barber and Davis and Lake Road. While they haven't made it yet a formal request, we understand by their internet site, the local paper, the Oxford leader, that they have met with Mr. Ottman, who helped them develop a plan. We are here hoping that the planning board will review the project as a special land use and deny the project because it is grossly out of character with the surrounding neighborhood. And I'd like to invite all of you to take a look at the property and the neighborhood. The property, by the way, is a former gun club. And our neighborhood is basically rural family homes, mostly with barns, horses, paddocks. There's no industrial, there's no institutional developments in our neighborhood. Again, our neighborhood hopes that you, the planning board, when the time comes, review their proposal as a special land use and deny the development as has been proposed, at least that we've heard, as an institutional dormitory housing 200 children and having almost 100 employees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Blommer. I live at 3601 Barber Road. So I'm a contiguous landowner to the House of Providence property. I'm here this evening as one of the many concerned residents who wish to take this opportunity to give you a heads up on development plans that will be submitted to you at a future date by the House of Providence, who has recently purchased property at 3921 Barber Road. The landowners, residents, and citizens are strongly opposed to the House of Providence plans, which are to build a campus of multiple dwellings to house miners who are wards of the state. To show you our united opposition, several of the contiguous landowners to this property have taken the time to be here this evening, to be here this evening, to demonstrate our solidarity on this issue. The intended House of Providence usage is not consistent with the existing neighborhood or the township master plan, ordinances, or zoning laws. As you may be unfamiliar with Barber Road, let me briefly describe it to you. This one mile block of Barber, that's called Barber Road, at the south end is Oakwood, and at the north end is Davis and Lake. The House of Providence is at the north end corner. Our road today has eight landowners, all with single-family homes. Five of the landowners are engaged in growing crops, and three maintain and board horses. The residents are longstanding owners with ownership of some properties going back as far as 1941 and 1950. The low-density environment currently enjoyed by the landowners will be radically changed with the construction of multiple living accommodations requiring over 100, 100, help of area workers driving in and out every day to service the juveniles on a 24-hour basis. Barber Road is a dirt road, which in many sections is impassable for more than one car, at a time requiring a motorist to ease over onto the hedgerow to permit an oncoming car to pass. The road is at times, especially in the winter months, impassable, and the neighbors, we all join together to open the road with our snowplow so we can get in and out. This situation does not work for hundreds of cars needing daily access to come and go to service House of Providence, which means the county may be forced to enlarge the road and change the surface to ensure the welfare of the juveniles and accommodate the daily workers. This would dramatically change the character of our neighborhood. Last, I'd like to say, our rural section of Oxford Township has the distinction of being in the heart of the metamora hunt. This is an equestrian pursuit that has been in existence for almost 90 years. This historic treasure should be nurtured and not destroyed by high-density activities that are inconsistent with the existing neighborhood and which can impair not only the equestrian life, but most importantly, the chosen way of life of the residents. We would like to maintain the neighborhood heritage as a rural agricultural community. We strongly encourage you to give consideration to the existing residents' objections to the high-density plans of House of Providence and deny them a special use request when they present their plans to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Folks, will you make sure you sign in so we get the correct spelling of your names so it gets entered into the record, please? Thank you.
Hi. My name is Jim Munus. I live on Gardner Road. Our property is contiguous to the Providence group. The bottom line is Providence is a commercial business trying to locate an agriculture, single-family area. That will utilize Oxford taxpayers, township amenities, schools, parks, all paying zero taxes and paying themselves very well. Please review Providence income tax submission for 2014. It's online, it's public knowledge. Okay? It's the latest one that we could find. Nothing there for 2014 yet. And this shows the business side of Providence. I don't want to go into the figures and bore you with it, but believe me, the money they get every month and every week for each child will overwhelm you. We don't need or want the zoning change. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Just so you folks know, we can't, at this point, we can't have any dialogue back with you. I wrote some notes on your concerns, and I have them entered. There'll be, if a submission comes through, which we haven't seen, there'll be plenty of meetings, and obviously, if you're within, was it 300 feet, I think, you'll be notified? So, okay? So we appreciate you coming, showing up, and addressing your concerns. Thank you. Thank you. Commissioners comments? Mr. Curtis?
I have none.
Ms. Roger?
Yeah, I was at the public, or the township meeting when they spoke to you. When the residents came to me and asked me about this, I said, "Go to the township, ask your questions," and I started to look into this. And I still have a question myself on childcare institutions and the lack of specificity in our ordinance for that. We don't have that as a special use. And that's something that, on the ordinance review, I know that we talked about looking at, but there's a deficiency that I see, and it needs to be addressed. This issue is most likely going to come up, and I think what the neighborhood is asking for, and what I am asking for, is clarity as to what districts a childcare institution would be allowed in. We know what districts a foster home would be allowed in, and a group foster home would be allowed in, but institution is not listed anywhere.
Great.
And I think the matter is urgent. And on a second note, I guess, really, I'll head on that.
Okay. Mr. Spiz?
Nothing for me at this time.
Mr. Young?
Publicly, I've got a comment for Brian. I went to your last meeting, so I'd like to thank you for your service. It's been a pleasure working with you. We wish you all the future.
All right. I have a reply to you, but I'm going to wait when we get down to the ordinance review subcommittee for what you just talked about. Okay?
Well, I don't know if it's wise to wait. I think some people don't.
The only, the research that I've done is that, I understand that this is state law regulated. As far as the...
No, institutions aren't. Institutions go to local zoning. Group homes are state regulated. Foster homes are, but not institutions. And I got that right from the state, and I have it in writing.
What are you defining as an institution? I don't have to get into a debate.
Yeah, but I...
If it's licensed as an institution, it's an institution.
I don't think...
That's what an institution is. And it has a definition that it's a non-owned facility. It's not owned by the person that's running it. It's owned by an entity or organization.
That becomes an institution?
That makes it...
An LLC, an incorporation, makes it an institution?
No, it's not a private home. A group home is when somebody owns a home, and they bring in people.
Up to six is unregulated.
If it's a group home and you own that home.
Right.
When you no longer own that home, somebody else owns a home, and you have hired staff that live in that home and not a homeowner, that brings it into a different class of institution.
That's kind of why I didn't want to get into it, because I think this really is going to reside at the ordinance review subcommittee level and to bring something to us and have our planner investigate and the attorney investigate what is governed by state and what we can put in our ordinance. Great.
Right. Well, the state says that that is something that go back to local ordinance form. That's why I think...
Until I see an opinion from, you know, I, what I saw is that it's state regulated. That's all I know. I didn't do any, but I'm not an attorney, and I didn't do any depth research, but anyway, we can discuss it later. Last winter, you brought to, that you were, and we tried, you even tried to have a meeting, but we got snowed out or something for the minutes. You were going to bring minutes to Curtis Wright about how we're keeping minutes? Did you ever get your package submitted?
I have all the information, I even emailed it to him, and I CC you.
Not on minutes?
Oh, yeah. I did a recount right from the...
I've never seen an email on minutes.
...organization here for Township, Michigan Township Association, where it says clearly that the minutes for a township board are clearly different than a planning commission. Fighting commission being a legislative branch, needs to have much more thorough minutes, and it goes through the whole content of what should be in there.
All right. All right. Do you plan on meeting with Mr. Wright on this? Because he is the clerk, he is the defining body, and it's going to...
I'll probably send the email.
Okay, because I never saw the email on minutes. I never saw it. All right. And my last comment is, Brian, I wish you well in your future endeavors. It's really been a great pleasure for 10-plus years, I think, working with you. You've been awesome, so I really, I appreciate what you've done, sticking your neck out for this community, working hard, understanding it, knowing our different areas of our community, getting out, driving the roads, knowing it all, so I appreciate that. Thanks, buddy.
Thanks.
Public hearings, we have none. Unfinished business, we have none. Item 10A, amended final site plan, parcel ID 22101003, commonly known as 925 North Lapeer Road, DBA Legacy Center applicant. I see you're here. Tell us what you got.
Hi. Good evening. Kristen Mills, 925 Lapeer Road. First of all, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. It's nice to see everyone again. Your time and consideration. You know, I think maybe the best way to start is to just, you know, Jim Sharp has reviewed the plans, and I think his recommendation is for approval is noted, and there were a couple of notes within the plans that, you know, were worthy for some discussion. So I'm not sure the format of this process, so maybe you can help guide me through that. Mr. Bell, if you agree, maybe we can start with his, his letter and, you know, work towards, you know, final approval there.
Okay. You have more?
No.
Okay. Planning Commission, I don't want to break precedence this evening from what we normally do. There's a couple things I want to make sure that you absolutely are clear of before we go too far down the road and start discussing certain things. First thing is, do you remember when you were granted your rezoning request, the commission was pretty adamant about submitting a final site plan? Do you remember that?
I remember the discussion, yes.
Okay. Do you also remember that we, meaning me and you, Mr. Dunn, and Deputy Supervisor Burns, also had a meeting here in the conference room? And I was pretty adamant at that time that you submit a final site plan.
Yes.
Amongst, we discussed other things, but that was one of the big topics.
We were in the process, yes.
Yeah. We talked about the MDOT right-of-way, we talked about build-out plans, we talked about other things, but specifically, I made mention several times that a final site plan was going to be required.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Good. When are we going to receive our amended final site plan?
Well, that's been submitted. The amended final site plan, you should have that.
This is what we have in our packet? This is the amended final site plan?
That's correct.
Okay. Have you gone through Article 12.3 of Zoning Ordinance 67A?
12.3?
Yep. It tells you exactly what you need for final site plan supplemental.
I mean, I think we...
Or has Sue Jack, I think Sue Jack is your engineer, civil engineer?
Yes.
Planner?
I mean, we've, we've actually gone through all of that and then submitted it
Okay.
to Jim Sharp for his review.
Well, Mr. Sharp is our engineer, Brian Ottman is our planner, and I'm referencing, right now, the concerns are planning issues, they're not engineering issues, because engineering issues can be just virtually on this size site, can be solved.
Okay.
So we're talking more planning issues from Mr. Ottman's point of view.
Okay.
And Mike. All right. With that...
So I believe everything is complete in the packet? If there's something I'm missing, we have, we have a landscape plan, we have a lighting plan, and then we have the full site plan.
All right. Let's talk about some of the, let's talk about some of the things that you think are in the plan. First of all, lighting plan.
Yeah.
We have not received a lighting plan in our packet. Well, it was requested three times from your office. Our planner received a hard copy. We requested a digital copy, because that's how we receive our packets, and there is no lighting plan in our packet. We have a, we have a, I have a memo inside that, and let me get it, let me just get it out for you. So we can...
We had a verbal request, but Mr., Sue Jack had submitted that electronic lighting plan.
The electronic copy was received at time of the second supplemental. Was not, I'm sorry, was not received. On 8:15, talked directly to Jennifer at the building department counter and requested to email it to me. On 8:18, still haven't been in, Mr. Dunn left a message to Jennifer for, to email the electronic copies. On 8:19, I left a message for Kristen that I need a copy emailed, the last set of plans a consultant reviewed. On 8:19, phone number on application for Jennifer is no longer in use. As of 3:44, 8:19, when she sent out packets, I received no call back or email. Hard copy is available in the office, but we did not receive it in our packet.
Well...
I emailed the PDF, I'm sorry.
You want to step up?
Yeah.
Sorry. Jennifer Geer, on 925 North...
You're the Jennifer in the letter that was referenced, yeah? Okay.
It came from two different emails. We have Tiana, who's our civil engineer, and then Steve is our MEP engineer, who also does our lighting plan. So it was probably sent from two separate emails.
Okay. Well, our, I can tell you that our, we're very thorough in our department and our plans, and if she didn't get it, she didn't get it, and it is not in our, and it is not in our packet. Now, the consultant has reviewed it, and we will discuss that in a moment, even though we don't have it, all right? Because there's many deficiencies. So let's talk now, since we're talking deficiencies. The parking calculations on the top of the site plan, you state that you're going to provide, I'm going to just use rough numbers, I mean, I can open it up, but you said about 400 some spaces and 24 handicap somewhere in there for 450 spaces or something?
That's correct.
About that number?
Yes.
How'd you arrive at that number?
On the site plan?
Yeah. Well, you've got, you've got it, you're asking for it, and you're showing it. I'm just wondering how you arrived at the number, 450 parking places? It doesn't indicate, there's no table, there's nothing that tells me how you arrived at, I'm asking you.
Well, I imagine the engineer counted the spaces.
I know he counted them, but how did he get to the number? See, we have an ordinance that tells you how many spaces you need, so I'm just wondering how you arrived at that number.
Oh, well, you know, we backed into the number as far as the available space for parking and the number of spots, but also, you know, we had worked with Mr. Ottman, and he had asked us to put a spreadsheet together of our existing tenants and also, you know, projected tenants, which is hard to do, and what their availability is. So to the best of our ability, with a building that is not fully leased, and, and with a number of assumptions of how many spaces we might be required for each of those facilities...
Okay. Let's start with, let's start with the basics, and I'll help you through the calculations, because I did them today in my office, all right? What you did is very nice, you put how many employees. I'm going to say 113 is what I saw on the, right up on the top left-hand corner of the plan.
Right.
Okay? Rule of thumb, used to be in the business, that between 10 to 20 people besides the employees for commercial business, that's between 1,000 and 2,000 parking spaces. Just a sanity check.
Right.
The next thing I did is I went into our ordinance under C2 zoning, and I took the most stringent and the least. Well, guess what? The most stringent is a, is one space for 100 square feet. On your plan, you tell me you have 208,000 square feet. The most stringent says one per 100 square feet. That's 2,000 parking spaces. On the other hand, the least for C2 is 1 to 200 square feet. That's 1,000. So let's just say you had a blended rate. That's 1,500 parking spaces.
Right.
How are you going to park 1,500 vehicles on here? Because our ordinance is, if you don't demonstrate to us, this planning commission, that you can use less spaces or need less, you have to tell us. That's why Brian, for over 12 months, has been asking you for the documentation to prove to us the amount of parking that you can utilize or need to, because this planning commission does not want a sea of asphalt. We don't want 1,500 spaces out there if you don't need them.
Well, what we submitted to you as far as our calculations are both reasonable and best estimate of...
Where are the calculations? That's what I'm asking you.
Well, the calculations are based on actual tenants and, you know, the number of employees and the number of employees per shift. And we spend a great deal of time trying to kind of hone in on this process, so for example, you know, Urban Air, we may have 60 employees, but we have seven employees per shift, so at any given time, we may be using, you know, seven parking spots.
I understand employees, I get that part.
Plus...
The part I don't understand is what you haven't communicated to us is how many public people are in there, clients, customers, whatever name you want to use, public. How many public people? And what is the crossover? What are peak hours? What are off-hours? What is the transition? We don't know if you don't tell us.
Well, we did. We put a whole spreadsheet together.
Where's the spreadsheet?
Well, it's right here. It's in the packet. Should be in the packet.
What packet?
That's the first packet we submitted. The first packet we submitted before...
That is not in our packet.
Is it?
There's a first packet that we submitted. It has this, a map of our building, the original site plan. It got denied, the site plan. This was in the original packet that I dropped off. I had 10 copies.
How long ago was this?
Probably two months ago, and then our site plan got denied.
Your site plan got denied?
That we needed a photometric plan and a landscaping plan.
Who denied your, who denied your plan?
We got a letter. Dana called me and sent, and an email that we needed a landscaping plan and a photometric plan that I didn't need to re-submit this.
So you did not meet the criteria for site plan submission?
Right.
So the, the building department and the planning office here made a determination that you were light and deficient in your plans?
Right.
Okay? It is your obligation to submit to us your final site plan documentation. We've been asking for that for 12 months, and we haven't seen it.
This...
We, we have not seen it.
Yeah.
It is not in any packet. It needs to be in our packet and submitted with our packet. If you want to deviate from the ordinance, this planning commission can grant you parking deviation, but we have to have justification. If you don't show it, we don't know it, we're going to tell you, you need to put 1,500 spaces on this site.
Sure. First of all, you know, we would have never scheduled this meeting, or if we had some understanding that the electronic copies of everything submitted, you know...
Not everything. Only photometric grid we don't have. We have two drawings, I have them up on the board. We have...
I'm just saying, if we put together a complete pa, this, this particular document has been available and reviewed, you know, a number of times, and so my apologies that, for whatever reason, you don't have the documents that I thought you had for this meeting, because I wouldn't waste your time putting this meeting together with it in front of me.
Great. Let's get past that.
Okay.
There's many others. There's many other deficiencies on this plan.
Okay.
Nobody, yourself or your, or your engineer, read section 12, or Article 12.3 for site plan supplemental documents. You didn't curb anything. All parking has to be curbed. There's no curbing. The only pa, the only bit is that where you tie in over on the one side. The entire lot has to be curbed. Islands have to be curbed. You have painted islands. Just so you know, why we curb islands is to control traffic flow, so nobody high speeds through that parking lot, like I have witnessed personally. That's why we do it. It's a pain to snowplow around, I get it. It's a safety issue. That's why we require it. You can't paint islands.
So...
We have to curb them.
We've had multiple discussions as it relates to curbing for this plan, and, you know, we've been given direction that, you know, because it's an existing lot, you know, there are certain areas that...
You're going to bring this lot up to snow. You have to bring it up to ordinance, it's in our ordinance, plain and simple, I can tell you that.
Okay.
Or you're going to have to seek a variance from the ZVA. Okay? Site landscaping and buffering. The only landscaping I see on the plan identified is what you're doing in the parking area. We have neighbors to consider. You plopped your safety path down along the M24 right-of-way without any regard to what the landscaping is up there, the existing trees. You're going to kill every tree that you have up there with that safety path. Those need to be replaced someplace on the site. This is clearly a substandard site plan. That's why I broke precedent tonight, because I didn't want to sit here and debate all of these issues. That's why I took charge and brought forth all of these deficiencies.
So you're saying the safety path that the engineer had put on is too close to the trees?
Well, there's a certain area he has to put it. So if you lose the trees, you got to replace them someplace. You can't just kill them and mow them over and not replace them someplace. I suggest... I suggest you read our entire 67A and specifically article 12.3, which will guide you through the process of exactly what needs to be submitted on a final site plan.
When I look at the, the site, the line of sight for the safety path, it's not through the middle of the trees.
Okay, trees, trees have roots that go out and I'm telling you, you're going to kill those trees. By the time you change your grading, by the time you curb up along that park, that, that drive used to be parking, now it's going to be a drive, as long as you curb that, you're going to change the elevation grade, you're going to kill those trees. Trust me, I've seen it.
Okay, so...
You, if your engineer can prove to me that he's not going to kill the trees, hey, we'll go along with you and we'll see what happens. If they die, you're going to replace them. That's all. We've got it written right in our ordinance also. That you got to maintain the trees that you put in, right? The landscaping. So I'm...
But it also, as it relates to the other landscape plans, I'm not sure what you're requesting. I mean, there, there is landscaping throughout this landscape plan.
Is it identified on the plan? Is it identified in the table like it's supposed to be?
I believe so, yeah.
No, your table shows new plantings, it doesn't show existing. I have to go hung around for the trees that are identified on the plan, but it doesn't count. You don't have them in a table to count towards your landscaping green belt requirements. You need to identify them, you need to buffer to the neighbors. I can assure you of that.
So you want me to identify the existing buffers that are there?
You need to identify every single tree that's on there and put it on a table. All landscaping needs to be identified. This is a final site plan. We're only getting one whack at this thing. It needs to be absolutely complete, every I dotted and T crossed. That's why I was adamant in the meeting and at the, and at the rezoning that this final site plan has to be submitted and gone through thoroughly. This is a, this is a contract between the township and you of what you're going to do on that site before you get final occupancy.
Well, this is kind of a hybrid program. We have an existing, we have an existing building, right? An existing parking lot that we're trying to...
Restore, I get it, I like legacy. I'm not beaten up on it because I don't like legacy. I think it's a great thing.
I understand.
I have to protect and I have to uphold 67A like the rest of these members do. We have to, that's our job. When you do something like this, this type of project, you have to bring it up to accordance with 67A. Or otherwise, we'll be approving a, what's it, non-conforming existing or what, Brian, what's that term?
It's an existing...
Existing non-conform, excuse me.
Yep.
So you've got to bring it up to snuff. And if our ordinance changes, which we're in the process of making some changes, and you don't have this approved, those, those next changes will be in effect.
Okay. So we've done some preliminary reviews with the landscape plan, the lighting plan, and so this is the first, I'm hearing that the landscape plan is adequate.
The landscape is fine for the parking area, but that's all you talk about. We're talking about the entire site. It's got to be done, for the entire site, not just the parking. Remember, that landscaping was put in in the 50s and they probably didn't have site plan review back then. So you got to come, you have to bring it up to current standards. Your paving, you don't give us cross-sections. Your site lighting drawing that I haven't seen, I'm taking on the word of our planner. You show a photometric, but you don't tell, tell us what type of lights, what height the poles are. You show the locations on the, on the, on the site plan, but you don't give us the information. We need the detailed information. What type of lights they are, what kind of cutoffs they have, the wattage, how high the poles are. We need all that information.
Those are in that plan?
I don't think they are.
We don't have the...
They don't have the...
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think part of the miscommunication here is that the electronic copies that we thought that you had for this meeting are not here, so we'll start there and then...
That's this much of what we're talking about. It's utterly nothing.
When I look at the site plan, as far as the landscape plan is concerned, you know, certainly we'll do a review to make sure that for the entire site, you know, we were looking at the parking lot because that was our understanding, was that the focal point was to make sure that the parking lot was up to speed versus looking at this as a brand-new construction project.
And not only that, but you're going to have to show building elevations and you're going to have to show signage on your final site plan, even though the ZVA is... I think, I, 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 I don't want to misspeak, what happened to ZVA? Postponed. Okay? But if that gets approved before you submit this, that signage needs to be on that drawing as part of our approval because it is on the site plan. You asked for elevations, I got it. So I'm sitting here...
We have our homework to do.
Yes, and again, I'm going to break precedents for lack of, for expedience. I'm going to move that the planning commission deny the amended final site plan approval for Legacy Center Parcel 0422-101-003, Zone C2, General Commercial, applicant Christian Mills, 154 Grove Street, Lake Orion, Michigan, 48362. This denial is based on the following reasons. Deficiencies in parking calculations, curbing, site plan, site landscaping and buffering, site lighting and photometric grids unsubmitted. MDOT letter for either approval or denial of parking or easement in the right-of-way of MDOT. It's been moved, been moved by Bell, supported by Spiz. Never said that before. Is there any discussion of the motion? Seeing none, I'd like a roll call, Volt. Secretary's not here, do you mind doing it, Dana?
Rosner?
Yes.
Roll call, Volt. She's asking you.
No, Rosner?
I said yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, I didn't hear you. My ears are bad, sorry. I'm looking at you.
I thought you were supposed to say something else.
All right.
Yes.
And Curtis?
Yes.
Val?
Yes. You forgot one.
Yeah.
No. I got them all used in here.
You said yes, too?
We're on, Spiz, Curtis, Val.
Your plan has been denied. You've got a lot of work to do to get this up to snuff.
So as it relates to the MDOT right-of-way, our plan did not include any parking for the MDOT right-of-way?
I see a portion of it that looks like it could be in the MDOT right-of-way. You'd have to, I want to see a dimension on there because that one parallel parking to the building to the north looks like it's close to being in the MDOT right-of-way. I know you didn't do all the angle that was there, right?
Yeah, so we...
But what did MDOT say?
We'd like to amend that. Our initial conversation with MDOT is that they don't approve that.
That's what I thought.
So really, the indications weren't parking on the front. The indications were just striping in front of the doors, you know, for fire code to make sure...
Then I want, then on your plan, your recent metal, I want the words pasted. No parking all the way down through there on that. And you will have to post it and the chief will want it posted too. Okay? Signs on the building, signs on the grass, both that say no parking, fire link. All right? Because it looks like you have parking, parallel parking up against the building.
Yeah, that, those stripes were for, were for people leaving.
Make sure you take into account the chief's letter because he had a couple items on there. Dumpster's a biggie. Not inside the building, right? And, and a lot of comments from Brian. But Jim, I think your letter was pretty clean because it, right?
You know, alignment of the safety path, that was kind of a little goofy because the safety path just dumped them out onto that access to McDonald's, so they somehow need to connect that. And, you know, we noted the curbing and some other minor things, but all in all, it was pretty clean.
Okay. So you really don't have a lot of engineering issues and those can all get handled probably through the construction drawings, but you still need to pay attention to a couple of those, right?
So, yeah, I think we had, had some questions there. All right, we'll go back and do a final review and I hope you accept my apology for not getting the administrative piece of this accurate.
All right. Get it, get it done right for us, please. All right? Thanks.
Okay.
All right, moving on. Item B, preliminary and final site plan, proposed to construct a maintenance building Seymour Lake Park. Mr. Davis, I see you are here, sir, with Mr. Kynas. How about a trip to Mississippi?
Yes.
CJ says no, Dave. We can go in at the...
CJ. Before he's our plan for the construction of our new maintenance facility, I guess I just want to take you back where we got where we're at now. So back in 2011, we started looking at building a brand-new parking wreck, maintenance facility. First of all, it's our parks and recreation job, most of you know. But as you know, our current maintenance facility, the department has grown so large that we've got equipment sprout all over the township, whether it's trackers, snowplows, a lot of our stuff is sitting outside. So in, in 2011, the commission, we took the initiative, tried to build a facility out back after we acquired the Patch Farm. And unfortunately, we just couldn't financially do it. So with the signing of the Vets Hall, that kind of expedited the need for a community center now. And Seymour Lake Township Park has always been a place that we wanted to move our offices and build such a facility. So in order to do that, if you're familiar with our current maintenance barn, the facility, the part that runs north and south is heated, which is the old farm. The part that goes east and west is a cold storage side, which will be used for our community room. The warm side will be our offices. But before we could do that, we have to build a facility out back. So that's the plan we put together originally. You know, we looked at doing a community center. The bathroom was a senior center, converting our offices all at the same time. It came in, the bid, or most bid was 1.4. So we met with Bill Dunn, some of the other elected officials. Jack Curtis has been involved since the get-go, Jim Sharp. And we decided to do this in three phases. This maintenance facility will be phase one. Phase two would be the conversion of the current barn into our offices next winter, first of spring, and a community room. And then phase three would be a bathroom facility attached to the current facility and the addition of a senior center. So starting to be a long-winded, but before we can get the ball rolling, we have to build this brand-new maintenance facility back by the Patch Farm. That's what we call it off of Coach Road. It's 50 by 100. It'll finally give us an opportunity to get all of our stuff looked at in one facility and not around the entire township. Save Jeff a tremendous amount of time driving back to Stony. We've got stuff at Stormlock. We waste a lot of time and money by retrieving our equipment, so... You know, I want to thank Jack Curtis, he's been involved from the get-go. I really appreciate his help. I can tell you that the township board has gifted, I don't know if that'd be the right word, $262,000 to make this thing a reality. Jeff has done a tremendous amount of work from the original bid to where we are going to build this thing for 25 cents.
Was it about 20% savings?
A savings by using the people that we use in our own community. Everybody involved with this project is an Oxford resident, from plumbing to electrical, to site work, to steel, to the barn, septic, you name it, everybody's an Oxford resident, so...
Would you, would you go on record and say that, or maybe not record, but would you say that using those subs, you're getting some kind of value back or decrease because you are the Parks and Rec?
Yeah, it's...
That's how, that's how you negotiated some of those cheaper rates?
Yes, relationships. We've worked diligently over the 20 years to build here. I mean, it's, it just doesn't come by calling them and saying, come on, it's, it's, it's working to create these partnerships.
I know I don't have to suggest this to you, Mr. Davis, you probably already have thought of this, but a, a little thank you in the Oxford leader to the, the people that did their thing, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. So we're excited about the plan. Again, Jeff is here, I know Jim may want to speak to it. The only thing I'll ask before you guys is, I'm going to ask you to waive the safety path. It's ludicrous to spend money to put a path there that, that has no recreational or health benefits whatsoever. If you're familiar with that site, it leads to absolutely nowhere. And you know how frugal I am when it comes to, to spending yet health and recreation? I'd be the first one to tell you to put it in if it had a benefit. It has no benefit at all by any means.
Yeah, Mr. Curtis?
Can we be creative in waiving the safety path requirement and state one of the priorities right now is to get from here out to Seymour Lake Park? And if we made a commitment for future use of the safety path like we did here at this township office, until we get out there, he could then put the safety path in where it's going to be most utilized and that would be along Seymour Lake.
Brian, how do you, I don't know if we can dictate that here, right? We have to approve the plan with the safety path on here, right? That would be something you'd have to take up with the board, maybe?
I think it, I think it's handled through the Safety Path Committee, actually. So, I mean, it has to be shown on the plan and they've done that.
We have to approve it with the plan on there?
Yeah, but they'll seek a waiver from the Safety Path Committee at this point.
Yeah. So really what you're going to do, Mr. Davis, is you're going to seek a waiver from the Safety Path Committee after we get a, because we have, we have no choice but to approve with it on there.
Okay, that's fine. Just to give you an idea, I think the, the cost of that is $4,000. I mean, come on, I'd rather put in a plate structure or a pavilion or something that people can utilize.
If we, if we had any choice in this matter at all, we would be backing you. I, I know how...
I understand.
I know how cheap you are. I'm not going to use the root of food, okay? I've known you, known you a long time.
As a resident, you got to appreciate it.
I do appreciate it. You've done a great job as Parks and Rec Director. I'll go on record all day and support it. But we have no choice.
I understand.
So, Brian, let's go to, let's do the review letters real quick and then we'll get to commissioners' comments. How's that?
Yeah, we reviewed the site plan and, and Mr. Sharp did an excellent job of making sure everything was in compliance with the ordinance. I just had to say that, you know?
Thank you.
He was trying to beg me not to be too tough on him, so... But at any rate, everything in the plan meets the ordinance requirements. However, they're, they are going to have gravel parking and, and maneuvering lanes, which makes total sense at the park. It makes no, it makes no sense to pave all of that area. The planning commission has requirements that we've placed in the, in the letter, basically outlining requirements for waiving the parking and I think it's pretty consistent with those requirements. So any motion the planning commission makes tonight should include some sort of waiver of the parking, or the paving requirements in the ordinance. But, but with that, that was the extent of our comments.
I appreciate that. Did you review your own work, Mr. Sharp?
I did, I found several errors. No.
Did the sanitary come out of the ground before it got to the building or anything, or...
Not at this particular instance.
Not on this one?
No, no, no review on this, Mr. Bell.
All right. Thank you. Chief? I see, I see you got a review and I don't think I read it. So Knox Fox, 20-pound extinguisher, and you have no other concerns? No big deal?
And I know him and Jeff have spoken, correct?
No issue? You guys have no issue if we make that part of the motion, right?
No, that's fine.
Okay. All right, commissioners? I figured.
Mr. Bell, if I may? I don't know if it shows or not, I'm ignorant when it comes to drawings, but again, you know, Jeff and I kept in mind the setting out there, so it's, it's got an agricultural appeal to it with the coupoles and that type of stuff.
Yeah, it definitely came through on the, on the elevations here?
Yep.
Definitely.
Windows.
Yeah. I look for a motion then.
I move that the planning commission grants preliminary and final site plan approval for the Parks and Recreation Maintenance Building in Seymour Lake Park, Parcel 04-30-200-057, Zone Suburban Farms 2, applicant Oxford Township Parks and Recreation Department. This approval is based on the following conditions. Any unresolved issues related to the township plan or review letter dated August 17, 2016, and seeks a waiver through the Safety Path Committee for not installing the safety path. Also, this planning commission waives the paving requirement as required. End of motion.
It's parked. Been moved by Mr. Curtis, supported by Mr. Spiz. One item for clarification. The parcel number ID that you said in your motion does not match what's in my agenda.
Okay, let's look at the agenda then.
I have 0-30-200-057.
And I said 04...
Yep. My agenda's missing the 4.[1751.28] My agenda's missing the 4.
Yeah, that's the township identification.
Got it. That's, I knew, it just, it came out wrong. I didn't know what number it was. I could just tell it was wrong. Oh, no. No.
I read it right.
It was wrong here. I was right, too.
But I was right.
He was right, and it was wrong.
All right. Any further discussion of motion before we bore Mr. Davis?
No, let me ask with the-
We have a motion on the floor.
But I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I, you know what? Out of courtesy, because I've known you for 30 years, go ahead.
It doesn't affect the motion. Call, make a call for the-
All right. All those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. You have your approval. Sir?
We're ready to go like Monday. So, I mean, I can start the ball rolling and then get to the plan. I don't have to wait to go to the Safety Path Committee before we start.
No, 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 no.
We're good to go.
You can put, you can, as long as you can meet the building department requirements, you're good to go.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Sorry to keep you so long.
Sorry.
Violations report. Any comments, criticism, cheap shots?
Not this week.
Acreage lot split? You guys have nothing, right?
We have not, but-
Economic development?
Can I go back one second?
Yep.
Are we going, are we going to be, is any of that information coming back?
Jim has his hand up down here.
Oh, sorry, Jim?
Yes, we, I haven't reviewed it. It was just, it came through the email today from Bern Katzman that they did record the sanitary and water main easements across the future parcels.
Including five?
Including five. I'm assuming, I, I saw the preliminary. I haven't reviewed the recorded documents, but assuming that they were the same, then yes, that will probably be coming to you, to the lot split.
Okay. Good enough?
Good enough.
Economic development meeting next month?
I know, it's the Labor Day weekend back to school. Everybody's got kids doing that. We're not going to have the meeting.
October. Yes, good. Gravel inspection, nothing. Ordinance Review Subcommittee. This was, I believe, I threw down the gauntlet.
I'm ready to take over because it hasn't been done.
No meeting?
We needed to schedule a meeting.
All right. Do I have any volunteers on the Planning Commission that wish to sit on the Ordinance Review Subcommittee?
Well, I'm, I'm on it.
I know, I don't know, I'm not-
I'm ready to call a meeting Monday, but nobody's ever there.
Hold on, you're good. Relax. Do I have any volunteers?
Why are you looking at me?
Because you're only on one appointed committee. You could use another one.
It's on top of everything else.
Well, you don't have to. I'm just asking for volunteering. If you can, okay? You'll volunteer? Okay. I'm going to replace Mr. Berger with Mr. Young. And I'm going to ask that you guys get moving because I laid down, he was the existing chair. I told him I wanted a meeting before this meeting, or else. That is my ruling. So, let it be, so let it be written, so let it be done.
It's available Monday.
Well, Eddie's out of, out of town, so you're going to have to wait till he gets back after this weekend.
Two or three is a start.
Yeah, I guess you could get started.
I think we got to get-
Yeah, call me Monday.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate your service.
Not sure about Monday, but call me.
All right. Safety Path Maintenance Committee?
Nothing to report.
Water Sewer Committee?
Lots to report. We're moving forward. Design plans are done for the Lakeville Road Water Main. We had a meeting today and discussed the, the procedure what we're going through now is we're going to get up to an RFP. We've got some design standard changes by the Water Resources Commission, so it's causing us to slow down a little bit here. Other than that, we are moving forward. We are going to ask for some money to do well development on the crossroads for youth property so that we can possibly have a well pump station on that property along with the water treatment. To touch on the subject of the water main disturbance that happened Wednesday morning, Tuesday morning, Tuesday morning.
You mean minor inconvenience, wouldn't you call it, Jack?
You know, I was pretty proud of the WRC and everybody that was involved. They were there within hours. DeAngelo was there digging up the ground. And we were interrupted with low pressure for a couple hours, maybe. Other communities would have been out without, I'm sorry, Pete?
I had no water.
Yeah.
All right, also, my faucet not, it tripped me on.
But within two hours, you had low pressure.
Oh, I wasn't there, I was-
Yeah, you were standing over there with me drinking my coffee. We, we, we were pretty proud. WRC was on-site. They had the streets all cleaned up, the guy's yard all cleaned up. DeAngelo was there. Within two to three hours, they had the ground opened up, found the problem, repaired the problems, turned back on, and the boiled water was lifted today at about 2:30 this afternoon.
It was good work. The, the only thing I have, Jack, is, is the Water and Sewer Committee or the Township Board going to look at some type of an action plan so that the media is alerted, so that those of us that get up early and have the TV on, is there going to be a way that they would know that?
We had, we had an hour-long discussion today with Amy Ploof, Connie Sims, Dave Brown. We are getting their ISO standards and procedures for notifications, for alarms, for people to contact, telephone numbers, who's in charge.
Well, those on Facebook do know about that.
Yeah, but they, even our township employees put erroneous information on Facebook. The wrong website was put out there. So, we're even going into social media awareness with this procedure once we get all the documents from the WRC.
Okay.
I got a call at 5:30 from a disgruntled Planning Commission member that he, his wife couldn't shower, so we started the ball rolling, but it was Pete that really found the whole thing out early in the morning. One of the stub caps blew off the end, and by the time they shut the valve and relooped the water, well, they emptied about 300,000 gallons out of red-barked water.
Yeah, I saw a picture.
There was no, there was no thrust block. There's a concrete, basically cemented behind where a hydrant or a stub or something because of the pressure, and it was found that there was no thrust block behind it.
Jim, you know, I, I'm glad you brought that up, and I don't want to, I don't want to beat this up in the Planning Commission because I think this is a Township Board issue, but I, I just want to enlighten Planning Commission members about what Mr. Sharp just said. Thrust block, concrete thrust blocks have been used at intersections where pipes make 90s and there could be movement from pressure buildup, especially at deadheads. Been used for lots of years. I don't even know, 40, 50, 60? How on earth did that get installed when we had an engineer on, on staff back then when that was put in, inspecting it, and it's not there? So, my concern is, how many other deadheads do we have when that was installed that we have this similar problem with, with all thrust blocks?
That voice, that same concern was voiced at the Water and Sewer Meeting today, and we are reviewing it. The cost to go through and check them all, the cost to go through and first determine how many we have, then to determine what it would take to dig them all up and find out if they're there or not. It's being reviewed.
Okay.
Were the plans submitted for that, the design plans?
There are designed, but that was done by-
20 years ago by Row.
Couple engineers ago. It was done by Row.
Yeah.
And they actually provided the inspection for it. It was not our office, it was not the WRC office. It was, it was Row, and it was, I believe Diponio Morelli or somebody had that contract. I wasn't involved at that time, but I believe that's who I've heard.
It's shameful that something like that got passed when we pay all that good money for good engineering and inspection services to be out there.
And to, to go after a 20-year-old system installation, you would be spending good money after bad.
Oh, yeah.
We don't know if we want to do that yet. We don't know if we want to inspect anything yet. We just, we just got the issue Tuesday. We had a meeting today, and we're working towards resolving all of it, including the procedure to notify WRC to make sure everybody is aware of what's going on.
Thanks, Jack. And you know what? I'm sure that Planning Commission really appreciates you taking that call early in the morning like that and getting on it, whoever that was.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. zoning board of appeals?
Well, you heard part of it, that we postponed, we moved to postpone the-
Legacy?
The legacy finding. Basically, when the plan came in, there really wasn't any concrete size on the buildings, how many, mural, what they were going to look like. There were some charts and some data, and it just wasn't all matching, so we thought it would be best to have some elevations. That's what we asked for, is building elevations showing exactly the size and location of every type of signage, mural identification, so that we got something in place and wanting to start with, and then we'll move forward from there. I, I guess it came out very clear to you that more could be added than what's even there.
And the copy could be changed, is what I read in the paper?
And what could be changed?
The copy?
Yeah.
So, in other words, if they have a rectangular area that has a certain graphic in it now of, of a pizza delivery guy, they could change it to a big boy?
Right, that kind of goes back to what I was talking at the previous meeting, the Planning Commission about the sign ordinance, because it's ambiguous. It's like, what, what control do we have over that? And it would be nice to have that kind of fix, too, because can they change it? Do they have to come back to Planning Commission to change it? And it's my understanding, you can't really regulate what it looks like, so yeah, the mural image could change, and what looks nice now might not look nice to someone.
I agree. All right. Village Planning Commission, Jack, I see you guys approved a three-story building?
Well, Dave Weckl's final site plan was approved for his building site, and the PUD was recommended to the Village Council to be approved for the area between Burdick Street and Stanton Street. There's one building that'll have to be started, I believe it's before 2018?
January.
January 2018. So, they have a Village Council meeting to where they have to approve the PUD, and once that happens, Dave's going to get started.
Okay.
Also, the master plan updates were submitted to the Village Council, and I do not have the date for the public hearing because it was kind of iffy at the Planning Commission as to when the next date would be. So, if you are interested in the master plan review with the Village Council, keep tuned to the Oxford Leader. They'll have an announcement in there for the public hearing.
Thanks. Mr. Ottman, any final words, sir?
I just wanted to introduce Matt, who's, who's from our office. Matt is a younger planner with the firm, but I think he's a good fit for this community. Both Matt and, and Don Warpman will be servicing the community from now on. Again, I, I said this two weeks ago, but I want to thank everyone for the time that I've had here. I, I love this community, I really do with, with, you know, it's, I considered it a home for a long time, and we almost bought a house up here. So, you know, that's how much I care about this community. So, again, I want to thank, thank you all. It was good working with all of you, and, and I'm sure we'll run into each other again someday.
Hope so. Thanks, Brian. Mr. Sharp? Oh, excuse me. Hold on a second. Matt, any words?
I just wanted to say hello to all of you. I'm looking forward to working with all of you. I did bring business cards because my last name is fairly long. If any of you want to email me with questions or just spam email like that as well. Oh, yeah, I'll be, I'll be here for the long term hopefully, and I look forward to sitting in on these meetings.
Pass those back.